All right, in the fairness of promptness, we're always very prompt here at Sparks. We always start on time. This is a 10:30 meeting. So, we're waiting for, we have two people that are in Los Angeles at the...
Charlene.
Whoops.
Now in the conference.
All right, we're good to go. They're in Los Angeles. They're calling in right now, so we can go ahead and hang around on time. So, let me call the City of Sparks Council Special Counsel Meeting of 11/9/2018 to order with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
Council members Abbott.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
Acting City Attorney Iting.
Here.
City Manager Driscoll.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Hey, pay attention there, Christopher, okay?
Yes, sir.
Just saying, okay, good. You're just kidding. Okay, let's go ahead. Opening ceremonies, Pledge of Allegiance ceremony. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Mr. Mayor elect Smith, would you lead us, please?
Absolutely. If you'll join me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public comment. You have any cards, Madam?
Yes, there's one.
Byron Johnson?
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, come on up, Mr. Johnson. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, good morning. I'm Brian Johnson, and I've been asked to come in this morning and present a petition to you, which I believe you all have a copy of in front of you, as regarding the lighting over near Reed High School. This is just from a group of concerned citizens who are just, regarding the terrible accident we had there a few weeks back, and they'd like to know what can be done about getting some new flashing lights over there and maybe improving the lighting around the high school. And I know I raised five kids that all went to Reed High, and I thought years back that the lighting wasn't all that great at night when I would be there for events. And that's all. I just wanted to present that, and I understand there's more concerns on the way regarding that issue.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, thank you. We appreciate it. You know, we know there's an issue there, and I believe we're working on it. Is that correct? So, something will be done. Exactly what? You know, we're going to work in conjunction with the school district, I believe, and we'll get something done.
Thank you, sir.
You know, we know it's an issue.
Appreciate you.
We don't need anything else to happen. Thank you for coming in. We appreciate it, Mr. Johnson. Anyone else under public comment? Okay, seeing no more public comments, let's go to the agenda. 5.1, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of Councilmember Abbott's request to reconsider the vote on item 910 of the October 22, 2018 City Council Agenda, which directed the City Attorney's Office to petition the appropriate court for judicial review and other appropriate legal remedies regarding the Regional Planning Governing Board's October 11, 2018 denial. Who's going to do it? Steve or Attorney?
I can, if you'd like, Mr. Mayor, Steve Driscoll for the record. Per the rules of the council, when an item is before you in an agenda, and there's action taken on it at the next meeting, by action of someone who is on the prevailing side, the item can be brought back for reconsideration if it requires a motion and a vote to then put it on the agenda, and you then would hear the same item that you'd heard before, just as if it was going back to the prior meeting. So, in this case, Mr. Abbott had asked to review and reconsider the litigation discussion that you had in your prior meeting related to the application at the Wild Creek Golf Course.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Lawson?
No questions. I'm ready for a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the request for reconsider the vote of item 9.1 in the October 22, 2018 City Council Agenda and here the item today at the special meeting.
Do you have a second, Mr. Abbott?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Abbott to approve the reconsideration. Questions? Hello, questions?
No questions. No.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, please vote. Do we have, are they back there?
Yes, from Christopher. Yes, from Charlene.
Okay, passes unanimously. Okay, let's move on to 5.2. Approval of the Agenda. Any questions or... Okay, looking for a motion?
Move to approve.
Another second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve the agenda as outlined by SAP. Seeing no further questions, please vote.
Yes, from Christopher. Yes, from Charlene.
Passes unanimously. So, now we're going to go to general business and do the reconsideration. Is that correct, Chief? Okay. 9.1, consideration. This is the actual agenda item that we heard before. We're going to re-look at the agenda item. Is that correct, Madam Attorney?
Yes, it is, sir.
Okay. Consideration and possible counsel direction to the City Attorney's Office, whether to appeal to the appropriate court for judicial review and/or seek other appropriate legal remedies regarding the Regional Planning Governing Board's October 11, 2018 denial of the City of Sparks' approval. Proposed amendment to the regional plan to relocate the existing regional utility corridor that crosses the Wild Creek Golf Course property located at 3500 Sullivan Lane. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning, Mayor Martini. Councilmembers, Brandon Sendall, Assistant City Attorney for the record. I'll shorten this up since we just addressed this at the last council meeting, but essentially the Regional Planning Governing Board has denied the City of Sparks' sponsored amendment to the regional plan, which would move the regional utility corridor that crosses Wild Creek Golf Course under state law. The council has 25 days to appeal that decision, and the City Attorney's Office is here before you for direction on whether or not to file a petition for judicial review.
Okay, questions, Mr. Sendall?
Yeah.
Mr. Lawson.
So, I think the reason why this is back in front of us is because this item has been agendized at the Regional Planning Governing Board for December 6 to be reheard already. What I think our desire, my desire anyways, is to not have the City of Sparks suing another entity. It's, I think, bad form in many ways, but the ultimate goal was to have the item reheard. It will be reheard, and that's why I think we should withdraw our lawsuit.
Mr. Smith?
So, have we filed a lawsuit as of yet?
No, it's due today.
It's due today?
We have 25 days, and this is the 25th day. We have a petition prepared, but it hasn't been filed.
Okay, so, if we do file it today, then what we're saying is that if they don't meet or if they don't pass it at the planning?
Yes.
Both? So, what I'm saying is, is our filing, does it say we're going to sue you if you don't pass this, or are we going to sue you if you don't have a meeting?
Mr. Smith, I'm wondering if we should take a minute and have an attorney-client session?
Okay.
So, some of these questions that can be asked concerning litigation, because this is definitely pending litigation.
Okay.
Anticipated litigation, and so a quick 10-minute.
Okay.
Do we need a motion to do that, to recess?
Recession is at the call, Chair.
Okay.
All right, so let's adjourn. Recess to, where are we going to go, kids?
Ms. Bybee and Mr. Dare, we're going to hang up here, and we will call Mrs. Bybee's cellphone while we're in the attorney-client meeting, and then we'll have you call back in when we come back to session. Okay?
Okay, that works for us.
Goodbye.
Goodbye.
So, we're going to go to the...
Can we get in this training room right here?
You have to, yeah, otherwise you have to go all the way around. Yeah, we can have them clear the chambers.
Clear the chambers and talk to them.
Just for a few minutes. Thank you.
Clear the...
All right, let's call the meeting back to order, please. And, uh... Mr. Smith?
I'm ready. No motion.
Uh, good. We need to make sure that's online first.
I told them, show them they're getting it.
Okay.
Say again?
Another roll call.
We're here. Gordon Verder is here.
No, I just want to make sure that the meeting is back on online.
On, okay, all right.
Roll call?
We're here. Gordon Verder is here.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, we're good.
Cheryl, do I need to roll call us back to order?
Yes, please do another roll call.
Okay, if you're alive, wave. Okay. I should be waving. I see him waving now.
Terjino, I need to do another roll call to reconvene.
Okay. Uh, we're gonna go ahead with the roll call, madam clerk. Go ahead.
Senator Martini. Council members Abbott.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
Acting city attorney Eiding.
Here.
And city manager Driscoll.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Smith.
Okay, I move to proceed with the filing today as planned.
You have a second? You guys listening down there? Any seconds or not? Okay. Hello? Okay, the motion dies for lack of a second. Uh, Mr. Lawson?
I'm gonna make a motion that we withdraw the suit and rely on our relationships with the other governmental agencies to do the right thing. I think one of the things we haven't considered here is we're asking as this appeal to approve a non-conforming use which is against Regional Planning Governing Board's bylaws. And I think that that would cause a conflict. There's other remedies with reapplying, and as I said, it's already scheduled for the December 6th to be reheared. So I would make a motion that we withdraw our lawsuit at this time.
Um, I'm sorry, councilman, that motion is not agendized. As councilmember Smith's motion died for lack of a second, there will be no further action. So you've got the city attorney's office to take action.
What a bunch of crap.
No, 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 I'm just saying.
Holy cow. What are we even here?
So it just dies, right?
It dies, it dies.
It dies. So we don't file, Ed?
You just don't file it. That's what time explains.
Relax there, pal.
Is it, you, there's no motion on the table?
There's no motion, that means the thing goes through. We are not giving counsel any approval.
No, you've taken it away.
We're not giving them direction.
You've taken away our ability to file it. You just, you just told us not to file it.
Yeah.
Exactly.
By Ron Smith's motion dying.
My misunderstanding, I apologize.
Sorry.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead, go ahead, Charlie.
We missed that, we missed that poll. We had no idea. We couldn't hear Cheryl and we were cutting out. We don't know what just happened.
Hold on.
So you didn't hear the motion?
Councilwoman Bybee, the, um, mister, or councilwoman Lawson asked that there be a motion saying that we not file. But since councilman Smith's motion died without a second, there is no motion actually to make because the city attorney's office has basically been told not to file.
Charlene, did you hear the part where I asked you if you, if there was a second on Ron Smith's motion?
Um, yeah, we did. But we don't support the motion, his motion. We, we wanted alternate B that Ed was proposing and with discussion.
You didn't, you didn't have you two wanted a second, is that correct?
We didn't want a second. No, we didn't.
We do, we do want the second for Ed's, no, for Ed's motion. For Ed's motion, and the reason, yes.
And if I can explain, that, that motion has not been agendized. And actually because Mr. Smith's motion died for a second, the city attorney's office is no longer authorized to take any action.
Oh, good.
So we're, we're back to square one.
Okay, okay.
But that, in discussion, that does mean if we can, we just heard that you can file again at any time if things do not go correct of what we think should happen.
We can, we can file if the regional planning commission takes some type of action on the 6th.
And I guess my, my, Cheryl, my confusion was I thought the two alternates in our meeting packet was either to proceed with the action or the second alternative was to not proceed. So I thought that Ed's motion was the second option of not proceeding. But are you saying we don't have to do that because the motion to proceed did not pass because it didn't have a second and it just died and it becomes automatic that we don't file?
Correct.
All right.
Okay, okay.
Moving on, then, any others, okay, public comment? Anybody wanna make, from the public wanna make a comment? Seeing none, comments from the mayor, city council, or city manager? Mr. Lawson, you made, you made your comments, right?
Some heated comments, I apologize.
Okay, seeing no other further adjournment, we're gonna adjourn as no further business. Thank you.